Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. We're glad you're joining us, those that are joining us on Facebook, those that are joining us online, YouTube, those that are here in person. We're glad you're here today. We're in for a good meeting. When you walked in the door, you could have picked up a meeting agenda packet. We always encourage you to do that so you can follow along with today's meeting. And if you're ever interested in the supporting documents that the commissioners have at their disposal, those Sedgwick County announcements, things we're going to... ...just be here. Starting up this week, we... ...gators, our administrators. And God, we pray for these commissioners. Ask of representatives of... And just pray that you give them wisdom in the decisions they have to make that are going to impact not only today, but the future for our children and our children's children. So, God, give them wisdom and insight and discernment in decisions they have to make. We ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Pastor Sir, thank you for being here with us. We appreciate you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. First off, I'd like to introduce County Clerk Kelly Arnold. He is here to talk about the revenue neutral rate notices that went out. Sir?
Hey, good morning, Kelly.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners Kelly Arnold, County Clerk. This week, your property owners and citizens started receiving a letter from my office, the revenue neutral rate notice.
We heard.
So, you might be getting a few calls in addition to our office as well. This is a letter that has gone out now for several years, but the citizens still are trying to understand how to interpret it, what they're looking at. And just some information on it, this year, we sent out 246,710 letters in the mail. And so, that takes a lot of work. This is also the first year we had emails go out. We had about 3,000 people sign up by email. We are going to continue to try to push for more email to save on costs and that kind of stuff for the county and the taxpayers. The legislature did make additional changes on this letter, so it is a little bit different. There was a lot more work that went into prepping this thing, and I do want to acknowledge, I did bring Angela and my tax team, they're a little shy up there, who has spent many weeks and many grilling hours trying to get this done, turned around in such a short timeframe. We literally only have just a couple of short weeks to put this, to gather the data, calculate it, and then get it to our vendor to get printed, and then have communications who did a great job of putting together a video force to try to help the citizens understand everything that we are doing. And so, I think with that, we have a video that I'll let you look at.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kelly Arnold, your Sedgwick County Clerk. If you own a home or business, you probably have received a letter like this from my office. This is a revenue neutral rate notice, and it can be a bit confusing at times. So, let me help you understand it. First of all, this is not a tax bill. It's an estimated tax notice. It is meant to inform you of potential changes, not a required payment. The top section compares your property values from last year to this year. Changes can affect your estimated taxes. Each taxing body, like Sedgwick County, the city or school district, has a revenue neutral rate. That's the mill levy rate that would produce the same revenue as last year, given the current property values. That column shows your estimated tax for each taxing body, calculated by using your assessed value and the proposed mill levy. These columns compare last year's total to the current proposed amount. If a taxing body, like Sedgwick County or the city of Wichita, plans to exceed its revenue neutral rate, it must hold a public hearing where you can ask questions and provide feedback. The hearings listed on your notice affect you directly. Again, this letter doesn't require you to do anything. It's just a notice. But here's what I recommend. Check out your assessed property value and compare those numbers from last year to this year. Note which taxing bodies exceed the revenue neutral rate and attend those public hearings. It is your best opportunity to stay informed and have a voice in the taxes you pay.
All right. Well, that video's only been up for about a day now. We've already had over three, around 3,000 views. So, this is getting out into the community. I've actually gotten feedback from state legislators that are appreciative that we've been able to do this and help communicate what they and we as local governments are trying to do, so.
Okay, Kelly, thank you. Appreciate the work from you, Angela Tax Team. Thank you so much for everything you've done. These R and R notices do go out, and we do receive a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails. So, I appreciate the work that you did to help with the communication.
Yep, appreciate it.
I might also say, and I'm going to take this moment because I got the mic, the revenue neutral rate piece for Sedgwick County government is a standard that we will always exceed revenue neutral rate for a couple of reasons. Number one, we have 3,000 employees, and they receive cost of living adjustments, and they receive step plans, and they receive compensation adjustments annually. That makes up roughly 50% of our expenditures here at Sedgwick County through our wages and compensation. The second thing is that we pass through 1.5 mills right through Sedgwick County government, right to Wichita State University. So, if there's 8.6% assessed value growth in the community, we can't cut them. They get all 8.6% every single year, and it totals around $11 million. In order for us to stay at revenue neutral rate, we would have to absorb that $11 million and then some on the backs of 3,000 employees to stay at the, under the revenue neutral rate. So, it really isn't the standard that is applicable for Sedgwick County government. I understand the heart, and I understand what the state was trying to accomplish here, but there's some context that's needed many times, particularly here at county government, so.
Yep.
You agree?
I agree.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Yep, thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Mercy U. Mary from Wichita State. She is here to present a mini MPA certificate. Ma'am?
Dr. Mary, welcome. We're glad you're here again.
Good morning, sir. Good morning to the county commissioners, the Sedgwick County manager, and I stand on existing protocol. My name is Dr. Mercy U. Mary from the Hugo Wall School at Wichita State University. A few weeks ago, we were here to present the mini MPA certificate to the Sedgwick County staff that had completed the 16-weeks program. But at that presentation, I omitted one person's name. So, I am here today to make it right. I teach human resources at the Hugo Wall School, and one of the things I teach my students is the importance of accountability, but at the same time, giving grace. So, I want to say thank you, Donna, for the grace that you gave. When we presented those certificates right immediately, I knew I made a mistake, and I had reached out to her, and she's like, Mercy, it's okay. So, thank you for the grace that you gave to me. And I want to say I'm really grateful to the Sedgwick County office. The kind of support we get from you all, the way you send your students to come and, you know, get enriched and get trained and continue to upskill, we just want to say thank you. So, on that note, I want to say, Donna Howerton, please come up to receive your certificate.
Yes.
And this is the point where we clap. Thank you so much for having me this morning. Thank you.
Yeah, very kind. Appreciate your words and appreciate Donna. Congratulations. We've had several of our employees go through the mini MPA certificate program. Thank you to the Hugo Wall School for all the partnership and what you guys do. It's a big deal here at Sedgwick County. So, Donna, congratulations. Hang tight afterwards because when we get done with a few of the public agenda stuff, and we want to take pictures with you, so hang tight if you don't mind, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Next, I would like to introduce two more hometown heroes honored this year. Joining me at the podium is Elena Moreno and Christian Wells. I will introduce each of them and why they were named hometown heroes. We'll take a moment to watch their aired news segment, and we'll have an opportunity for comments after. So, if you guys would join me, please. First one that we will show is Elena Moreno. She started as a dispatcher, then she went to a trainer, and is now the deputy director. Occasionally, she gets to be back on the floor answering calls and dispatching crews, and this was the case during the severe flooding on June 3rd.
Elena Moreno has been the Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Deputy Director for five years now.
I absolutely love it.
Better known as working at the 911 Call Center, she oversees everything in operations, staffing numbers, makes sure that her team is efficient when answering calls, and also oversees administration. Started as a dispatcher, worked her way up to a trainer, and is now deputy director. But every once in a while, she gets to be back on the floor, answering calls and dispatching crews. For example, remember when those severe storms came on June 3rd? Moreno had to get back out there and help out.
A big number of those calls were coming in, and so I came out here to the dispatch center and started assisting the fire dispatcher and making sure that units were being sent to calls.
Her team ended up taking over 2,600 calls on June 3rd, the average just under 2,000. This nomination was something that surprised her, but proved that even people behind the scenes should be recognized, as well as those on the front lines.
Really, my job is to support my team, and in doing so, it was recognized.
Thank you, Commissioners. Elena Moreno, Deputy Director of Emergency Communications. I just really want to say how important it is for me to know that my team is great. I'm so lucky to have a team that is just, they show up every day, all day, and I get to go out and play sometimes, and it's fun, and we always appreciate your support, too.
Yeah, Elena, you guys do, the work that happens at 911 and your leadership with the Laura, our director's leadership, is phenomenal. I think you get now roughly 1,200 on average calls a day at 911?
I think we're up more than that, but I, the numbers are, we're still working on that.
Yeah.
I just think we're closer to about 1,600 to 1,800.
That's wild. Well, and you're the frontline to all public safety, and I know on that day, it was, it was a wild day here in our community, and you guys were the ones that was directing all the traffic. So, you are a hometown hero, and we appreciate you greatly.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Christian Wells. She's an integrated care team clinician and supports 911 calls that involve someone having a mental health crisis. She's been in this role since the pandemic and is helping change the narrative on what mental health treatment is.
This week's hometown hero is Christian Wells. She's an integrated care team clinician and goes on 911 calls that involve someone having a mental health crisis.
We're really changing the narrative in what mental health treatment is and can be.
It's a role she's been in since COVID, but not necessarily something she saw herself doing when she first got into the profession. She's from small-town Eureka and went to school in Emporia, then made her way to the ICT.
Wichita just seems so huge. You guys have Walmarts, you guys have McDonald's.
And since being here, she's seen the integrated care team really take off.
We take requests directly from officers that need help on a scene.
She knows firsthand how hard it can really be.
What I found helpful was the people that can come to me and meet me in that time of need, lay my options on the table, and help me see what's next.
That's why she's this week's hometown hero.
I'm very humbled and very honored that this work is getting noticed and recognition for what it deserves because the programs that are across the nation doing this work are changing lives.
Christian, thank you.
Christian Wells, I didn't plan on saying anything because public speaking's icky. But as a therapist, we should practice what we preach, and I would encourage anyone to brag on themselves when they have an achievement. So, I am very honored. It's been a big personal achievement for me, but I'm also just grateful for the opportunity. It's built for my program. The day after this, we were slammed with tasks at hand, so it helps us get the word out for what we do to the community, and I'd be silly to not thank you guys for the work that you put into building and expanding this program so that we can do what we do. Very grateful.
Yeah, Christian, congratulations. Let's take a second then, and let's make people more aware of all that you do. This is the ICT One team?
Yes, we have five programs, or five teams.
Can you explain to the public kind of what this is, what ICT and the co-responder model is?
Yes, so my program, ICT One, we have an officer, a mental health clinician, and a paramedic through Sedgwick County. Our other programs have two comm care staff, and we just added officers to those teams, which is awesome, and we're seeing big improvement in what we're able to do and reach. But we respond to anything mental health-related through 911, and we just bring the service to the individual versus asking them to drag themselves to a treatment facility to seek support.
Yeah, I'm sure these law enforcement officers appreciate you guys being unseen and helping these, these challenging calls, and these calls come in more frequently than they hadn't historically. And we said we have the ICT One teams. We also have, I think, upwards of eight comm care mobile mental health teams. There is significant work being done in mobile mental health in this community, and you guys have led the way in this. You are absolutely a hometown hero, and we're grateful for all the work that you do.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd like to take one quick opportunity to remind everyone that the final public budget hearing for Sedgwick County will be next week, August 20th, at 9:00 a.m. in this room, the lower-level auditorium of the Ruffin Building, which is 100 North Broadway. This is your chance to provide feedback directly to the Board of County Commissioners about the 2026 recommended budget. Citizens can also leave their comments online through our public forum at sedgwickcounty.org. And that's all I have for today.
Okay, Nicole, any questions or comments for Nicole? As always, wonderful job. We appreciate you. We want to get some pictures with our hometown heroes, and Holly, we want to get pictures with you, too, just to celebrate. So, we're going to take about a five-minute pause, if that's okay. One of these days, we'll have a chambers where we can do this right here in front, but right now, we have to go, well, maybe we will. We're going to go out front in the atrium right here and take some pictures. So, give us five minutes so we can celebrate these individuals. So much for giving us that grace. We wanted to celebrate that mini MPA certificate and the hometown heroes. They're worthy of celebration and honor, so let's keep moving. Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
Okay, no one has signed up for public agenda? On we go. Next item, please.
Appointments.
Justin Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. Take up items A, B, and C together here, if that's okay with you, Chairman. Item A is a resolution appointing Teresa Smith to the Mental Health Advisory Board as recommended by Commissioner Bluebaugh. Item B is a resolution appointing James T. Bryan to the Animal Care Advisory Board as recommended by Commissioner Wise. And item C is a resolution appointing Candida Wise to the Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board as recommended by Commissioner Howell. The recommended action on all three is to adopt the resolutions. Thank you.
Okay, Justin, appreciate that greatly. If you are receiving, if you're here today, Kelly Arnold was here to swear you in. I'll make a motion, and then we'll have some comments from the commission, and you're welcome to speak as well. So, while they're doing that, I'll make a motion to take the recommended actions in items A, B, and C. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, Kelly.
Good morning, Commissioners. All right, please raise your right hand.
Okay.
I solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board, so help me God.
Yeah, I do. I do.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
Here, if you'd like to sign in.
Okay.
Jeff, you can go ahead. I'll just sit back down now.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
I didn't prepare a speech, but I should take the time to say thank you for the appointment, and I look forward to the wonderful things that will blossom from this relationship.
That's good. Just want to say you have a really great last name, by the way.
I know. We could be related.
Her last name is Wise. This is, same as Commissioner Wise, Wise is your last name. Thank you for volunteering to serve on this role. I really appreciate you very, very, very much.
Thank you very much.
You're very qualified to do so. Thank you so much. You good to go? Yep, much. All right, next.
I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board, so help me God.
Yes, I do. Resuscitation. Statement. And then that's right there. Thank you, Commissioner Wise and all the commission for what you do.
Chief, thank you so much for signing up to serving this board. I appreciate our partnership with you out in Bentley as well, and look forward to having your wisdom and all of your expertise on the board. Thank you.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Sure, so I wanted to thank you very much. I appreciated our phone conversations and getting to visit with you today and getting to know you better, and really appreciate you stepping up and helping us in such a very important role, and thank you so much for serving your community, sure.
And I feel honored that I was asked to join. I've had a mental illness since I was here, basically after I had given birth to my son. I have five, been back in for five years already now. I have schizophrenia on top of that, and this is one of the workers at comm care that works with me.
Beautiful.
And so, I thank you for the privilege.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you so much. Okay, three great appointments. Madam Clerk, next item.
New business. Item D, DER 2025-00008, Amendment to the City of Wichita 2035 Urban Growth Area Map and 2035 Future Growth Concept Map as an Element of the Community Investments Plan 2015 through 2035.
Okay, Scott Wedle.
Good morning. Yes, Scott Wedle from the Planning Department. So, for this item, this is an item to consider whether to adopt amendments to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Comprehensive Plan. Here's the recommended action. They would update two different maps that are contained within the plan. One is the City of Wichita 2035 Urban, well, actually, it's the 2035 Urban Growth Areas Map, and then the second one is the 2035 Future Growth Concept Map. And I'll go through what the difference is on those in just a bit. So, the comprehensive plan's title is the Community Investments Plan. It is a guide, and it contains the two maps that are being considered for updates today. One of those, as was mentioned, is the Urban Growth Areas Map. It says advisory only. It shows the locations where cities in Sedgwick County expect to expand and could provide services by 2035. Now, a quick note about this is that this is different from, but related to, the Unified Zoning Codes Map called the Urban Areas of Influence, and that is the map that's involved in the zoning process. So, this is in the comp plan, and this one is different, but they're related because generally, they show the same areas. But an important item here is that you're considering changes related to the City of Wichita, and I want you to know that for the zoning code for the Urban Areas of Influence, the City of Wichita does not have an urban area of influence because they share the planning commission with Sedgwick County. So, they do not have that additional input that they get into the zoning process through a separate thing, through the joint planning commission. So, the second map then is the 2035 Future Growth Concept Map. This one is Wichita-focused, and it shows the preferred growth pattern for Wichita. Now, both of these are being affected, as you'll see, because there's a chunk that the City of Wichita is requesting to have removed. So, in terms of the process, this was initiated by the city council back in May of this year with a focus on the area near 55th and Ridge Road. The recommended action would remove the following area from the Wichita Urban Growth Area and the Future Growth Concept Map, and I've got graphics that will show the more specific, but it generally is bordered by 47th Street to the north, Hoover to the east, 119th Street to the west, and is halfway between 55th Street and 63rd Street to the south. So, here's the location shown on the Urban Growth Areas Map. And then here's what it would look like if it was removed. Here's the location shown on the Future Growth Concept Map, and again, here's what it would look like if it was removed. So, as part of the analysis for this, staff did a review of the area. The future land uses recommended in the area are agricultural or vacant, industrial and commercial. And you can see the industrial shown as the purple, the pink is the commercial, but the majority of it, as you can see, is shown as agricultural. Staff also looked at the following features, flood plains. There are some areas located within 100-year flood plains, shown in blue. Now, in addition, we also... we also did a review of Wichita CIP projects, and that Wichita CIP does not program funding for any of the following in the area, no fire stations, police stations, or roadway improvements. And one quick note is that the Wichita, the location does include an electrical substation located approximately half a mile to the east. This is one of three locations in Sedgwick County where solar energy conversion systems can connect to a larger electrical grid. The City of Wichita CIP does not program funding for water mains in the area. Here's a graphic that we received from city staff showing where they anticipate having lines in the future. City staff have provided a map, which is this one, showing planned extensions. It does show one near Hoover and 47th sometime in the future, but again, no funding is programmed for that in the Wichita CIP. So, we see that as more of a forward-looking initiative. In terms of contamination, KDHQ records do show the presence of contamination in the southeast portion of the area, and that the contamination is being remediated. The KDHQ records indicate that it poses no unacceptable risks to human health or the environment based on current conditions. Staff also reviewed the proximity to airports, and the site is approximately two miles to the south of Eisenhower Airport. There are no concerns or issues with that. So, here's a review of the review and consideration process. On June 26th, the MAPC reviewed the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and approved a resolution. That vote was nine to zero, adopting the proposed amendments. On July 15th, the Wichita City Council approved an ordinance adopting the proposed amendments to the comp plan as well. So, again, here's the recommended action, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, Scott, appreciate you and the staff. So, already went through the City of Wichita, unanimous vote. Just, we're going to open it up for questions here from the Commission, but just to make sure the public is aware, this is unincorporated Sedgwick County property now. It will remain unincorporated Sedgwick County property now. There's no annexations happening, nothing of that sort. City of Wichita is just saying, and their open, and their future growth concept plan is, we have no intention of growing into this area.
Correct, yes, sir.
So, the scope is around, I know the scope of our decision is around just amending the plan because Wichita is not growing into this area.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, questions? Okay. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to adopt the findings of the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and approve a resolution amending the Community Investments Plan 2015 through 2035. Sign the resolution and authorize the resolution to be published.
Second.
A motion and a second. Let's pause for a second because when a lawyer over there looks at me like that, I look at the chief lawyer and say, why are they looking at me?
I'm deferring to Scott right now, Chairman, sorry.
Sir, I'm just curious if you might want to open it up for public comment. It's a change to the comp plan. I know it's not a zoning case, but...
Sure. And I, Justin Wagner County Council Chairman, I would say it's not required by statute, but you certainly can and open it up to public comments if you might want to withdraw your motion in second and then potentially make those motions second.
I fear we can't open up for public comment. I think it's wise, so I'll withdraw my motion. I'm assuming Commissioner might withdraw a second. We'll officially open up a public hearing and invite anyone that would like to speak from the public. You're welcome to come down and speak. Okay. Second chance. Okay, seeing none, officially close the public hearing. Bring comment back to the bench, and I will restate my motion. I move to approve and adopt the findings of the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and approve a resolution amending the Community Investment Plan 2015 through 2035. Sign the resolution and authorize a resolution to be published.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Appreciate all the work being done. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item E, a resolution amending section 24-304B of the Sedgwick County Code on Solid Waste.
Hi, Susan, welcome.
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. Susan Erlin Ryan with Environmental Resources. Before you, it's a resolution to change a small portion of the Sedgwick County Code that involves solid waste. And currently, there's a statement in there saying that for the facility design and operation for transfer stations, hazardous waste or construction and demolition waste, as defined herein, should not be accepted at any transfer station. The purpose for this over 20 years ago was to encourage the development of construction and demolition landfills. Construction and demolition material includes drywall, bricks, concrete, carpet, roofing, that sort of material. That has been accomplished. There's two construction and demolition landfills in Sedgwick County, but unfortunately, they're both at the north end of the county, and there's nothing down south. The transfer station located at South Hoover and 55th Street South is planning to open on September 1st. If we take out the wording that, and demolition waste from that definition, they could now accept construction and demolition at not only that transfer station, but the north transfer station as well, and that will allow proper disposal of material at both ends of the county, and hopefully less illegal dumping will occur. Also, today, Ben Tucker is here with Waste Connections. He's the Vice President of this district, and he's, I'll be happy to answer any questions, as will he. Thank you.
Okay, Susan, very good. Thank you. We've met before on this topic, on brief Commissioners, so any further questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to approve the resolution for item E, which amends section 24-304B of the Sedgwick County Code on Solid Waste.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, Susan, thank you. Appreciate all the work. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item F, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on August 7, 2025.
There he is, Joe Thomas.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts, the regular meeting of August 7th. We have four items to present to you today. Our first one is change order number one, which is Provider Network Management System for Department of Aging and Disabilities. Excuse me. This recommendation is to accept the change order with caseworthy to extend the contract period through February 1st, 2026. Item number two is bridge improvement. The project is B 628-4-4625 for Public Works. Recommendation is to accept the low bid from Reese Construction, and it's in the amount of $60,224.35. Our third item is electronic monitoring for the Department of Corrections, and this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Green Feather Monitoring LLC at the rates listed, and that's for a period of one year with two one-year options to renew. And our final item is the Network SSA Agreement for Division of Information Technology. This recommendation is to accept the quote from CNC Group at the rate listed for a period of five years, which began August 1st, 2025, and will go through July 31st of 2030. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Okay, Joe, we got four items on bid board. Any questions for Joe? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bidding and Contracts for August 7, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Joe? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Hey, Tom.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stalls, County Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items G through R on regular agenda today.
Okay, Commissioners, we've all been briefed and talked through consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to remove item I from the consent agenda, and we'll talk about that in just a moment.
Okay. Pull item I for discussion. Anything else? Okay, seeing no other comments, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items G through R with the exception of item I.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, item I, Amendments to the Sedgwick County Stormwater Management Code. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just the last Friday, we did agenda review. I saw this for the first time, and it just, I could not remember the background as to, as to this topic, but I've done some, just a little bit of research on this at this point, and I guess I want to, I want to go back and, I guess, have this Commission review the discussion that happened in 2016. This is a, and I'll just say, I'd like to see a motion in just a few minutes here, a motion to defer this until we have a staff meeting to discuss the item itself. We have not really been briefed on this. It seems like it's very simple, not a very complicated thing, but I don't know that we've had a briefing on this, if we have.
Staff.
Staff meeting. I don't know where I was on this, but okay. Don't remember the details of that, but anyway, going back to 2016 and looking at the background on this, this is more about the quality versus quantity. We have talked about stormwater a lot, that I remember, but this is about rescinding the change we made in 2016.
Correct. We had a staff meeting a couple of weeks ago where myself and Susan Erlin Ryan presented on a couple of different items, one of which was specifically about the amendment to the stormwater code. And before I go for further, for the record, Lynn Packer, Director of Public Works and County Engineer. So, when we met, we discussed a minor change to the amount, to the code that basically is going to allow for the stormwater management regulations to apply, not just within the urbanized zone, but the entire county.
Right. And I'm not sure if that was plainly said during that meeting. I guess that's my point. And I don't know that I remember at that point that we talked about this was rescinded in 20, this was actually passed in 2010.
Yes.
To be honest with you. In 2016, it was rescinded, and from 2016, November 2016, until today, we've not had that regulation. It's been, it has been basically for areas that have been identified by, I guess by FEMA, that have a different regulation than like other areas that other, by other words, rather than making this county-wide, there are areas that, another additional regulation applies to certain areas of the county based on flooding, that type of thing. What we did in 2016 was we removed that county-wide regulation and made it, it was directed to specific properties. And so, when we talked about this a few weeks ago, I don't know that it was clear that we were rescinding what we did in 2016.
Apologize if it wasn't clear. The, what we've run into of late is water quality and water quantity issues throughout the unincorporated portions of the county with not being able to have new developments adhere to those requirements of those regulations. Basically, runoff is running unfettered outside of those subdivisions into our ditches, into the adjacent cities. So, there is no quality or quantity measures that need to be met when you're outside that red eye zone.
Okay.
One of the goals that we did talk about was we're trying to get all of our communities, all of 20 of our cities, to get on board and adopt the regulations that the City of Wichita is observing right now, as well as we are in the urbanized zone, and that is with the Sedgwick County, City of Wichita, regulations for stormwater quality and quantity. And a big component of that is amending this regulation so that it applies to the entire county, and then unincorporate portion of the county. And that way, when we have drainage coming from city to county, to another city, to a county, to another city, as it goes from the northwest all the way down to the southeast in a general flow, we're able to have those same controls in place all throughout.
I understand from that perspective, perhaps, the consistency across the counties is what you're trying to desire here. But my opinion, there is an overregulation that's also part of this, and regulations ultimately cost time and money. So, there is a reason that we made that change in 2016. Again, before 2010, this didn't exist, and since 2016, this hasn't existed. What this, what this is, is a regulation that's good for us, but not necessarily good for the people being regulated. So, I think we need to go back, and again, it's less about the quantity, it's more about the quality. What that means is things that are in the water that are, that are, you know, that are flowing off of one property, where that, where that water goes, and what's in that water is really the, is really the question at hand here.
If I may, Commissioner, I will note, one difference I think you and I have is, I think this is equally about quantity and quality because we are having a lot of erosion issues outside of our subdivisions in the unincorporated areas of the county. Those erosions are coming at the expense of neighboring properties as well as the county infrastructure, and that has been a problem. We're fighting it. We, the developers technically are doing nothing wrong by free-flowing outside of the developments because we do not have those requirements in place. So, we're having to hard armor and make adjustments as developments occur.
Well, this was a fairly, fairly long discussion in 2016. It was something that we talked about for a number of months, and we had a very robust discussion the day we adopted this. And I would, I would just note that at that time, we had four Republicans, one Democrat, and this passed four to one. That's the way this ended up. We had a supermajority vote, if you will, to rescind that 2010 regulation. And again, one of the things I do as a Commissioner is try to not overregulate people. I want to make sure people, that we regulate what needs to be regulated because there's a real, really, like life and safety purpose, if you will. This is an overregulation for people who don't need to have that regulation, but we're applying it to them. And that, I think that's the basis of my concern here today. I'm not asking to pass this today. I'm not asking to not pass it today. What I'm asking for is a briefing. I think that Commissioners need to know the background of this before we vote to undo what we did in 2016, which I think was excellent work, by the way. Again, so, you know, if you think we have a problem right now, let's find out what that is exactly. Let's, let's see, you know, we had maps up back then that showed the differences between the two, the two theories on how we treat property owners. We had those maps up. I've not seen those maps since 2016. So, I guess my thought would be, I would like, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see us delay this till we have a staff meeting on the topic. So, bring it back at the appropriate time, but have a staff meeting to discuss the details. And I guess I would like to ask the Commission and really staff to kind of review the discussion until it happened in 2016, so everybody's up to speed before we make this change, if that makes sense.
Appreciate that, Commissioner Howell. Lynn, question, obviously, stormwater is a big part of discussions that we've had here. We did have a staff meeting. We covered and discussed this topic. And you and I've talked with Susan regularly on this topic. Can you give a practical example of what this regulation would do for a developer, what they would have to comply with? I want to try to understand that. I think the public, I want the public to understand too.
Sure.
What would be a practical example of what they would have to do?
A good example of a change that would occur is the sizing of, for example, detention ponds, which are very popular in subdivision because it gives you those, you know, pond view, lake view homes that developers like to put in. There's many ways to handle water quality and quantity, but that's usually the most favorable one because people like to have that, that view. And so, right now, there's no requirement for how long that water needs to sit in that detention pond before it's released downstream. And in addition to that, there's no requirement on how much it can release at any given time. So, the regulations would require that pond to be sized appropriately to be able to hold for 24 hours a, I believe it's a 10-year storm, but it needs to be able to hold that, that water in that pond to allow for siltation to occur, get all those sediment to settle down before that water is discharged out. So, it's contained there, and we have cleaner water that's being discharged. In addition, it requires usually sizing of either a rock or concrete weir of some sort at a specific elevation so that we're metering out that outflow and not just free-flowing out of those ponds.
Okay. I appreciate that. I appreciate any Commissioner that wants to have further discussion. I certainly do appreciate that. As someone who lives in unincorporated Sedgwick County, I see this personally, and I am very concerned with things that are happening that are running onto my property and into my, as someone who is dependent on well water. So, I'm obviously very interested in the topic and the conversation, and I think things have changed a lot over 10 years in the discussion of what we're, the elevation of the discussion. So, I appreciate this. I appreciate the staff meeting. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make, I guess, a comment that, again, if this is not changed, I'm seeing developments go in today that are planted that have retention ponds today.
Correct.
So, it's not like this, not like we're not speaking to the topic. We are.
Actually, we are. Those ponds are not appropriately sized to remove the sedimentation out before it's discharged. So, dirty water goes in, dirty water goes out. It goes into the next city. It goes in the unincorporated, down in the next city. So, that water that actually is eventually being percolated through the ground and into wells in, in the unincorporated portion of the county, as well as... the unincorporated portion of the county, as well as cities as well, is, has higher nitrate levels. It has, you know, the sand and the dirt does a decent job of being a natural filter, but it doesn't catch all that. So this gives us an opportunity to go through multiple developments as it's, as it's working down to settle out those impurities, giving you cleaner water downstream each time it goes. We don't have that in place right now.
Well, I'm certainly not an expert on this topic, but I'm willing to learn more. But I'll just say this, that we had, I think we had a very robust discussion in 2016, and I don't like, I don't like when we go back and forth, back and forth. It seems very political, honestly. I don't like that. So we made a very thoughtful decision in 2016. I don't know that we have flooding problems due to a lack of regulation today. Maybe we do, and you can show me the data on that. But again, all I'm asking for today right now, Mr. Chairman, is a delay to get us to understand this more deeply before we go change this back and forth yet again.
Understood. Commissioner Meitzner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do recall the workshop we had on it. It's pretty much the same information, except the new information that the historic perspective from Commissioner Howell is the new information that I received now just from this conversation. So I'm, I'm okay going forward with this, but if we need to have another repeat of exactly what we saw at the last one, plus the new information that includes the historic perspective of 10 years ago, 15 years ago, then that'll add to the deal. And then, so we can hear, we can do another staff meeting if we need to. And I appreciate the historic information that Commissioner Howell provided, but I kind of respect the environment of what we're working with, especially with the stormwater runoff and other things that are going on, retention ponds. So I am in favor of moving forward on this, but I'll respect the will of, of the Commission to have another staff meeting.
Okay, Commissioner, I appreciate that. I would say that I, we have talked about this and the opportunities there, and obviously I have a very invested interest regarding what's happening in unincorporated parts of Sedgwick County. It has been somewhat of a tradition when a Commissioner asks for a deferral, for more information and to have conversation, that we've honored that. And I don't know if we need a staff meeting. We have had a staff meeting. I feel comfortable on where we're at on these, some of these discussions. I might have follow-up questions, but I call Lynn a lot anyway, so it might be a conversation, be able to meet with any Commissioner that would like to have a follow-up discussion, maybe just reach out to.
We can definitely send.
Reach out to Tom and Lynn and Susan, and then they can schedule maybe a two-two-one or just an individual meeting and walk through some of these, and then we can get this back on an agenda. It's important if Commissioner wants to defer and have more information. In my view, I think that's, that's worthy of honoring. So, okay. Commissioner, if I can make a motion on this specific item, we moved on without it, but it's just handing...
Since it sounds like we may not have a staff meeting specifically on the topic, I guess I would just make a motion that we would defer this for two weeks.
Okay.
Well, two weeks would not be, make it three weeks. Make a motion to defer this for three weeks.
Okay, we have a motion to defer for three weeks. I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, Lynn, we'll get back at it. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Budget Discussion.
Okay. Commissioners, we're on budget discussion yesterday. We had a very robust conversation. Appreciate the discussion, and we have some motions that will likely be coming on Adoption Day that we can all work through staff and, and work through ourselves. There'll be a lot of emails and phone calls flying this week and early next week. So anything else we'd like to discuss during budget discussion? Commissioner Meitzner.
I just, thank you for, I think yesterday's discussion was, was pretty good and very lengthy, and I appreciate some of the details and the proposals that are being thought about. Were presented yesterday. Gives us time. In the past, sometimes we've just had them presented to us on, on Budget Adoption Day, and we didn't have a, as collectively a group, a chance to, to vet those ideas or those proposals. So I do appreciate that yesterday we did have a robust discussion and presentation from various Commissioners. So I would encourage if any of you are, you know, we have the, the proposed budget from the manager's proposed budget, and working from that, if, if any of the citizens want to know what other items could be in the proposed budget, I would suggest that they watch, I don't know how long, was that an hour and a half-ish or so yesterday? Anyway, maybe we could just put that out there, and people could watch that and hear what specific items might be coming at us for decision a week from now.
Okay.
But thank you, everybody.
Yeah, agreed. Okay, anything else under budget discussion? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, next item.
Federal Grants Discussion.
Okay. Lindsay, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman. For the record, Lindsay Pobusso, CFO. So I do want to take an opportunity this morning to share with you some information that we received via our federal lobbyist yesterday. We routinely get a grants newsletter from them. It's very valuable. Yesterday, they were able to share some information in that related to future grants and expectations that have been outlined in an executive order that was issued on August 7th, and I just want to bring it to the Commission's attention because it will affect future grant applications. And so the earlier notice you have, you can understand our process changes and why we may be doing some things differently in the past. So Carrie Maylin, who is one of our grants administrators, did a pretty thorough analysis of that executive order, and I want to give her credit because I'm going to steal her work and steal the, and share the summary that she has prepared. So the executive order that was issued basically says that at a federal level, more oversight of grant opportunities is going to be required. So there will be a requirement that agencies do not issue any new funding opportunities until that agency appoints a senior appointee who will create a process to review new funding opportunity announcements. In the scoring rubric that they use, any discretionary awards must advance the president's policy priorities. There are specific things that the funds cannot promote, encourage, subsidize, or facilitate. There's going to be a preference for awards to those with lower indirect cost rates, so that's where we are able to recoup dollars that we spend on administrative support to do federal grants. They want us to apply or comply with gold standard science, which is a little bit different from the evidence-based language that we're used to. We'll have to establish clear benchmarks when we're submitting those to show that we're complying with what they want. There are going to be revisions to that uniform guidance. The week after budget adoption, I think I've shared with you, several of our departments get to spend about two days in in-person training, learning all about grants from our Forbes Mizzards folks, so spend coffee. There are going to be some changes in grant terms, and this is the one I really think is important to highlight. And that is, even after we have received an award of funding, there are now going to be termination clauses included in any of those grant agreements that come to us. And if the agency determines that the award is no longer effectuating the program goals or agency priorities, or if the agency determines that the remaining portion of the federal awards will not accomplish the purposes for which the federal award was made. And I want to highlight that because that's a pretty subjective standard, and so that's going to require more intensive scrutiny, I think, on behalf of the Grants Compliance Office, more work with departments too, to help them understand that. And then every time we're going to go and request funds, we're going to have to submit written explanations and support for every single one of those drawdowns. So this is going to be significant new work for your departments and for your grants compliance team, and potentially you as the overseers of the funds. There may be some new requirements. So as we wait to see compliance supplement information and things that will shed some light on how this executive order will actually be applied, you may have some new responsibilities too. So of course, we'll keep you in the loop on that, either us or legal. So just wanted you to be aware of those changing circumstances. We did also yesterday in that grants newsletter receive, and I think you, some of you received this too, there was an announcement about an emergency management award for early warning. The state of Kansas has notified our emergency management director that they have no intention of pursuing those funds. So just be aware, I think you all will sometimes forward those on to us to pursue, but that's not going to be something that the state is going to pursue this time. So that's what I have to report. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for the update. Appreciate everything. Any questions on that? Okay, keep us posted. Appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee Reports.
Okay, Commissioners, anything under committee reports you'd like to report back to the public? Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you. Just wanted to, I think there's been some recent news going on. I serve as our representative on the WSU Tech Board, and you've heard there's going to be some expansion just to the south of that building in Cap. And there's a lot of momentum going on in the community, and Textron has obligated some money to get that completed. And so it's just, there's going to be, I think you're all are getting invited to a groundbreaking coming up, and it's just the impact of that school on, with the young adults and even older adults who want to get their feet back on the ground with, is just, it's really invaluable. It's unique from around the country. And so anyway, that expansion is going on. There's just news in the Journal today about Textron stepping up big. And so anyway, thank you. Just let me share that.
Yeah, appreciate that update. Very good news at WSU Tech. Okay, anything else under committee reports? Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Okay, anything under other? Just remind the public that next Wednesday, August 20th, is Budget Adoption Day, and there will be our second public hearing. So I'm going to encourage people to come out and voice their opinion, give us some feedback and insight, and then we will be adopting a 2026 budget next week. Anything else under other? Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive Session.
We have none, which is a relief. No executive session today, so we are finished with our business. Anything else need to come before the Commission? Okay, time is 10:00 AM on the dot. We are officially adjourned.